All right, I'm going to call the order. The April 8th regular meeting for City Council. If you could please stand for the prior and a moment of silence. Pledge of allegiance by Mr. Tankersley.
Please bow your head. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Spuhite, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Mr. Mr. Tankersley?
Here.
Just hang on. Mr. Cook?
Here.
Mr. Lovett?
Here.
Mr. Cox?
Here.
Mrs. Knight?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
And Mrs. Sharp shares absent with notice. Can I turn that microphone up? Can you hear that?
I can hear it.
Okay. Can you hear that in? Okay.
All right, thank you. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes of last meeting? Seeing none, those minutes will stand as approved, as written and distributed. Report to Communications, Mayor Hardman.
Thank you, Mr. Coulter. Just some really awesome things to share with all of you as we are in April. We are starting off in earnest. A great summer full of events happening down on the Loop, starting with the 17th. That's next Thursday, I believe that is. So next Thursday, the 17th, you can come out at 10:30 in the morning and listen to library staff with a construction vehicle themed storytime and activities. So bring those kids out to hear all of that fun next Thursday at 10:30. And then in the evening, we're going to turn the Loop into a Cruisin' on the Loop, Third Thursday tunes, Cruisin' on the Loop with Cars. And we've got music coming from Bluestone Ivory. So a live band to entertain you, starting at 6 o'clock, going to 8:30 next Thursday, the 17th. On the 26th, starting at noon, we're gonna, well, the place is going to the dogs for a little bit. So it's Bark and Buy on the Loop, a great activity that we started last year, continuing into this year, presented by Pet Suites here in Sharonville. So bring your dogs out, enjoy lots of fun activities for Bark and Buy on the Loop on the 26th. So that's what's happening in April. We got stuff planned throughout the summer, May, June, and July for the Loop to really keep you entertained and keep things exciting. So hopefully, we'll see you all there with some of those events. Mayor's Court revenue for the month and for year-to-date. So total current for the month is $22,828. A year-to-date is $56,970.80. We're a little bit behind our last year-to-date, actually about 10 grand behind. Part of that, and we're expecting that this might be a continued problem, is some change in law with regard to our ability to attach license suspensions to people who don't pay their fines. The state has said, "We can't do that anymore." Actually, not just us, but anybody can't do that anymore. So that piece of, well, not revenue. I mean, the revenue comes from the strong arm to be able to enforce that if you don't pay it, these are your consequences. So that lack of consequence is going to be a potential issue. We're trying to figure out what options we have to try to make people pay the fines for which they have incurred as a result of their bad acts. So I know that the Court, Ms. Coulter, her team, and then our fine law director here are working on ways that we might be able to attack, I mean, ways to get around that to try to make sure that people are doing what they're supposed to do. But so that's something just to think about. I don't know if that's completely accountable for the down. I mean, maybe it's just because people are following the traffic laws, and that's a good thing. We like that, too. So but that's where we're at. The full report will be made part of the minutes of tonight's meeting. That is all I have by way of report tonight unless anybody has any questions for me.
All right, seeing none, Safety Service Director, Mr. Lucas.
Thank you. Just the legislation this evening. First item, there's five pieces to be voted on. First item is Resolution 2025 R04E, dealing with the Ohio Public Works Commission, support of the Skip program. Ohio Public Works primarily has two ways that cities get money and townships get money. One is the LTIP program. That's the Local Transportation Improvement Program, which is funded through gas tax money. The other one is what this resolution would support. It's the Skip program, which is the State Capital Improvement Program, which is funded through the issuance of bonds. And every 10 years, if there's a ballot initiative where the voters across the state either support the renewal of that revenue stream or they don't. And historically, this is one of the most bipartisan things that is unanimously supported. So council with this resolution would support that ballot initiative. In the packet I provided, how successful we've been through OPWC and Skip and LTIP through the years. And if you if you look at that, we've been quite successful since the program started roughly 30 years ago. So again, this is just to support the voters voting for OPWC to keep on giving us money through a grant program, basically. The next item Lucas is here to talk about, Ordinance 2025-21.
Good evening. So in November of last year, the Spring Communications Corporation paid us a dual-issue check. A piece of that was a street permit. And then there was also an unidentified portion of that check. After reaching out to department heads and attempting to call the massive corporation, we went and just received it as miscellaneous revenue. They have since come knocking. And so since we do not actually, we are not entitled to this money, we are going to refund them. Since this went and crossed years, there is very little accounting way to get around it. And so what we need to do is ask for appropriations of the general fund to be able to issue the refund check to the Spring.
Any questions for Luke? Thank you.
All right, Ordinance 2025-22E is one of the proactive measures that the mayor was referencing regarding the new state law that's coming into play. Mayor's Court is currently using a collection agency called Capital Recovery, which has not been too effective. Ann would like to go with the AG's office for the collection agency, primarily for two reasons. Capital Recovery has not been effective, but also it means something when you get a letter from the Attorney General's Office versus Capital Recovery. The third reason, though, probably most important, is Attorney General can tap into state refund checks, which we don't currently have the ability to. This is pretty much the same thing that Linda Collins did in the Income Tax Department back in 2021 with a lot of success. So we're basically asking council to replicate that and giving the mayor's court the ability to use the Attorney General's Office. Ann's here tonight to answer any questions, but that is what it is in a nutshell.
Any questions?
And then two other pieces of legislation that David will touch on. Ordinance 2025-24E is purchasing some property downtown that David can briefly talk about. And then as he's walking up, another grant request, Resolution 25 R07E, through federal funds that he'll also touch about.
Good evening. Thank you, Jim. The reason why we're here tonight, just asking for your blessing to approve a purchase and sale agreement for the old Franklin Savings and Loan building. It's the bank that assists as the gateway to our downtown. We've been working with the property owner in a good faith partnership and also in conjunction with the Ohio EPA and submitted Ohio Department of Development Brownfield Grant in hopes of rehabilitating that property for future redevelopment purposes. Your blessing tonight, we'd like to keep marching in that direction. And we thank the property owner for his partnership in that endeavor. The second piece of legislation that Jim was referring to. Each Congress, at their own discretion, each member of Congress, each senator, they have the ability to solicit what's known as community funding project requests. They can vary in size and scope. Some offices do them, some don't. But essentially, we have had conversations with Senator Moreno's office as well as Congressman Davidson's office. Both are receptive to our project. It's known as the Kemper Road Infrastructure and Economic Development Improvement Project. It's timed nicely in that Springdale is also working on their part of the Kemper Road project. It really is a infrastructure road improvement project that will really, if successful, impact our business community in a positive way for the city schools, our convention center. And with your permission, we would like to go forward with asking between $1 and $1.6 million in congressionally directed spending for that. There is no upfront commitment by council other than to give us the blessing and Jim, the ability to execute any documents necessary. Any questions?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Legislation this evening, and we do not need the executive session that was originally to be requested.
All right, thank you. All right, from my report, two items here. First, I want to say congratulations to the Police Department. I understand you achieved gold level recognition from the LexiPol Connect Customer Recognition Program. So that's a testament to the great things that our Police Department does on a daily basis in terms of public interaction and the way that they handle situations and runs that they go on. So congratulations to the Police Department, congratulations chief on that. The second item, if you recall, my request several months ago to donate items to one of our officers who was deployed overseas. He's still over there. He's away from his family. And you guys really came through. In fact, initially, we had donated far more items than the Police Department themselves had collected. And that was a kick in the pants to them to, you know, pick it up. So Officer Brenner did send me an email to pass along or a note to pass along from Officer Roberts. I'll read it to you briefly and then I'll pass it along because there's a picture there with all the goods that they received. So he said, "Sarge, I wanted to let you know I received the boxes you sent. First off, I greatly appreciate the generosity of everyone involved and especially a big thank you for setting all this up. Soldiers and I are very thankful for this. I'm also very thankful for you and the department for reaching out to my wife as it really does mean a lot. The thoughtfulness and just keeping my family and my soldiers and myself in mind while I'm gone just reinforces every day that working for Sharonville was the best decision I ever made." So again, thank you for your donations. I have a feeling that since he's going to be deployed for some additional time, that Sergeant Brenner might come back and see if we might be willing to donate maybe another care package to him. So I'll let you know if that's the case. So I'll pass these along. And that's it for my report. Next on the list is Clerk Councilman Spuhite.
Thank you. No report.
All right, Law Director, Mr. Lippert.
Thank you. Just following up on what Mayor Hardman was talking about in regards to Mayor's Court. I think our Mayor's Court is at least somewhat unique in the Mayor's Courts that I've dealt with in that we are very focused on safety instead of revenue. And I would say that predates me as far as my predecessors. And that has to do with everybody who is associated with the Mayor's Court. But part of that with anything that's levied as far as a sentence has to do with accountability. And I would say that the Clerk of Courts, Clerk of Courts Coulter, is the one who's generating most of the ideas dealing with these changes. So I give her all the credit. She just checks with me to see if it's legal as far as what we're talking about. The only other thing I have is there was an oral argument regarding an appellate case the city's involved in, the Code 51 case up in the 10th District Court of Appeals today. I talked to our local council up there before the oral argument. I have not talked to him afterward. But he was prepared and anticipates a good ruling, hopefully in a couple of months. If anybody has any questions, I'm available. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, the man of the hour, Police Chief, Mr. Nesbit. Chief Nesbit, if you can come up for your annual Police Department report.
All right, so I managed to get a cold somewhere in the last couple of days. So pardon my cough drop. It may be the only way I get through this tonight. So a detailed report was provided in advance. And if you have any questions, I'm more than prepared to answer anything you might have. But for tonight's presentation, I wanted to discuss projects that required a significant amount of time and effort on the part of the Police Department, but elevated the department equal to the amount of work that went into them. Nothing's been, nothing could have been accomplished without the hard work and leadership of the exceptional women and men in the Police Department. In 2024, staffing levels fell due to retirements, resignations, and terminations, causing overtime to increase, but the department members rallied to meet each challenge. Not only did they meet challenges, but they also completed the daily tasks and identified ways to improve the department and meet the community's diverse needs. I want to start off by thanking our community for their involvement in our programs, for our efforts for coming out to the things that we put on and things that we're part of. I want to thank them for their positive messages, their emails, their letters of recognition to our department members, and for their donations. Community organizations such as BAPS and the programs that they organize support our community programs and give us greater impact in the community. And without these partners, we couldn't succeed. Thank you to the elected officials and our city management team for supporting and enabling us to realize departmental strategic plans and providing funding, equipment, and training opportunities as well as guidance and encouragement. But least but not last, or last but not least, I want to thank the command leadership and especially Mr. Terry Spuhite, my administrative assistant, whose contributions throughout the year and for this report have made a significant impact and a difference in what we're able to do. Staffing was a challenge in 2024. Many officers were forced to have their schedules changed and were removed from special assignments, all to fill gaps in staffing on the road. These changes disrupted their personal lives, but they pressed on. We hired four, promoted three, and created a new position, all in 2024. Two new dispatchers were hired, two police officers were hired, and a new clerk's position was created. Unfortunately, separations outpaced hiring almost two to one. In 2024, we lost nine members. We had four police officers retire and a senior member of our administrative staff, taking with them 150 years of experience, knowledge, and abilities. Three officers resigned, two for personal reasons, one under investigation. And we had a civilian staff not make probation. We worked with our union in hopes of developing a 12-hour shift MOU that would help us address staffing shortages. Despite a lot of hard work and a lot of meetings, it fell short and it was voted against ultimately by a very narrow margin. Big projects in 2024 included LexiPol. I was not, no, sir. I I can, but it doesn't follow what my presentation was. So, yep, no slideshow this year, sorry. The report, if you have any questions, I'll answer them. I learned my lesson from the first report when I did that, and I didn't scroll at all. So this year, I don't have any slides. 2024, we completed our LexiPol project. We actually started it as a department in 2012. So in all these years, we were not able to get it completed until 2024. The key elements of LexiPol are bringing policies up to date, automating the policy issuance process, as well as providing policy training. Their online format streamlines data collection and allows for uploading forms customization customized to our needs. LexiPol helps maximize our training budget, providing as part of our contract with them policy-related trainings and also vets against our city policy and local best practices. Vector Solutions was a project that we started on and we're still in the midst of doing, but it's worth noting. This program allows us to keep track of both employee performance and employee development as well as resource allocation, resource management, and maintenance of our equipment. Back in 2020, we had a change of records management systems that prevented us from having access to a program that would track what we're doing with employees, how we're developing employees, and what we're doing with our equipment. So bringing Vector Solutions online helps us do those very things. In 2024, we started a new employee appreciation program. Really, we just revitalized an old policy that we had. We had not recognized employees for significant events during their line of duty requirements since roughly 2011. And in 2024, we awarded eight life-saving awards, two meritorious service awards, and a Medal of Valor for an officer involved shooting. We recognized three different members of our community, two civilian public service awards. One went to the Kroger team and one went to the local Kroger manager for their efforts in support of our programs. And a civilian commendation award was presented to Mr. Jeff Ayer, who came through the assistance of Officer Livingston while taking a suspect into custody who was fighting him in the middle of Chester Road. We restarted our bike patrol unit in 2024. It had last been utilized in 2004. So after 20 years, as you might imagine, we had to update a few things, not the least of which was the officers, but we got new bikes, too. Hopefully, this festival season in 2025, you'll see them out on the streets. And this is a supplemental thing. It's not us trying to do more things with less. It's us adding to what the officers already have, the opportunity, basically expanding on their abilities. Throughout the year, we did a self-audit of our budgeting process and we did a deep dive, Terry's guidance and recommendations. We found new ways to structure our budgeting process, helped us trim down some of our budget needs. We found opportunities to do things a little different that helped us spend a little less, make a less impact on the general fund. But also, we found outside sources to fund some things. In 2024, we conducted our third annual employee and community surveys. Those surveys are very impactful, and each year, we seem to get more and more results. This past year, we had a combined 82% approval rating from the community. And we're grateful for their feedback. But next year, we hope to connect with even more members of the community. Their concerns still focus on traffic-related issues, thefts, and illegal drugs. Along those concerns, traffic safety and directed patrols were a significant part of our enforcement strategies. And we worked with the Service Department to install illuminated stop signs in some areas to help bring attention to the traffic safety concerns in our neighborhoods. Since staffing levels were a concern, frequent changes in assignments were needed, and our traffic safety unit was not fully staffed during the entire year. To address these traffic complaints and combat thefts from vehicles, we implemented some directed patrols and some targeted enforcement. It seemed to have a positive impact, however. I think numbers are still down for us and we're working to find ways to fill our staffing. We're having good success with that, but we haven't, we haven't found the magic solution just yet. But investments that we made in 2024 are panning out. We have more people interested in applying to the Police Department this year as we speak than we've had in the last two years combined. So we're finding good success with our recruiting efforts. A big project that displaced a portion of the department for a period of time was the replacement of the roof on the Police Department. This was a long-term project that initially started during the construction phase of the Police Department and was something that I took over when I assumed the role of chief. It was, at points, it was contentious. However, we worked with our project managers and we worked with our stakeholders in this. And we worked through the process, identified what the shortcomings were. Ultimately, the general contractor took responsibility for the roof not being installed to specifications, and they replaced it at their expense. It was a big project and displaced some of the department for a period of time, but we worked through it. Our department provided effective policing to Sharonville through better project management tools, organizing our efforts and implementing modern policing policies and practices, and delivered programs to larger numbers of participants than in the past. Our programs enhanced the quality of life of Sharonville residents and those visiting the city. None of these successes could have been achieved without the dedicated professionals of our Police Department, and I'm grateful for each and every one of them. We continue to seek new ways to increase staffing in the Police Department, and we are seeing positive results from our efforts. I look forward to reporting on additional successes in the future.
Thank you very much. Questions for the chief?
All right. Next year, I'll have a slideshow.
Didn't recognize you without your beard. You had on for so long, it's just...
I was told I looked younger, but when I shaved just the beard off, my wife said I wasn't allowed back in the house, so the mustache had to go.
You'll be sleeping at the police station until you grow up back?
I heard.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, are there any residents desiring to be heard before council this evening? All right, you'll have one more chance, seeing none. Council committees, Community Development, Mr. Tankersley.
Thank you, sir. Just a reminder, tomorrow, there will not be a BZA meeting, but there will be a Planning Commission meeting here at 6:30. Thank you.
Thank you. Budget and Finance, Mr. Cook.
Thank you. No report for Budget and Finance and no report for Project Oversight. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Community Services, Mr. Lovett.
Good evening. My reporters don't file with Miss Spuhite tonight. Just to kind of put it out there early, Wednesday, May 7th, at 4 o'clock, I believe we're still going to be in the in the Community Development Office. But Community Meeting, thank you.
Thank you. Honored citizens, Ms. Knight.
Good evening. Tonight, I'm honoring Audrey Privet, who recently passed. She was a very strong Sharonvillian woman, being Ohio's first female Public Works Director. She also played a key role in Sharonville Rec Department. She was a great person and had high standards for everything she accomplished. She did it her way, and we were lucky to witness it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Law and Public Safety, Mr. Schmidt.
Thank you. The next Law and Safety Committee meeting will be on the 22nd. There are five Tuesdays this month, so we skip a week, two weeks from tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, rule suspension and motions. Rule, first and only reading for immediate effectivity of ordinance is 2025-2021, 2025-2022E, 2025-24E, and Resolution 2025-R-07-E. Is there a motion for rule suspension for those ordinances as read? Mr. Lovett, thank you for the first. Ms. Knight, thank you for the second. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor, yes. Those opposed, no. Rule suspension carries, thank you. Unfinished business, Ms. Spuhite.
All right. Second reading of Ordinance 2025-17, authorizing operation of underspeed vehicles at intersections on Chester Road. And this is a third reading of Emergency Resolution 2025-R04E, Resolution in Support of State Issue Two, Renewal of the State Capital Improvement Program on the May 6th, 2025 statewide ballot. That's the third reading.
Third and final?
Third and final.
Would you call roll for that? Okay. Is there a motion for Resolution 2025-R-04E as read? Mr. Tankersley, thank you for the first. Mr. Cook, thank you for the second. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Tankersley?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Lovett?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mrs. Knight?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Emergency Resolution 2025-R04E has been approved.
Thank you.
And that's it for old business.
All right, new business, Ms. Spuhite.
All right. First and only reading of Ordinance 2025-21, Amending 2025 Appropriations for the General Fund.
Thank you. Is there a motion for Ordinance 2025-21? Mr. Tankersley, thank you for the first. Ms. Knight, thank you for the second. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Tankersley?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Lovett?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mrs. Knight?
Yes.
And Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Ordinance 2025-21 has been approved. First and only reading of Emergency Ordinance 2025-22E, authorizing the Safety Service Director to enter into a delinquent debt collection agreement with the Ohio Attorney General and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Is there a motion for Ordinance 2025-2022-E? Is there a motion for Ordinance 2025-2022-E? Mr. Schmidt, thank you for the first. Mr. Cox, thank you for the second. Any discussion? Seeing none. Roll call, please.
Mr. Tankersley?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Lovett?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mrs. Knight?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Emergency Ordinance 2025-22-E has been approved. Only a first reading of Ordinance 2025-23, amending Sharonville ordinance regarding surplus First and only reading of Emergency Ordinance 2025-24-E, authorizing the Safety Service Director to execute any necessary documents for the purchase of real property located at 11177 Main Street, parcels 6080004001300, and 11186 Reading Road, parcels 608004001200, amending 2025 appropriations for the 401 Capital Fund and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Is there a motion for Ordinance 2025-24-E? Mr. Cook, thank you for the first. Mr. Lovett, thank you for the second. Any discussion? Seeing none. Roll call, please.
Mr. Tankersley?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Lovett?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mrs. Knight?
Yes.
And Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Emergency Ordinance 2025-24-E has been approved. First and only reading of Emergency Ordinance Resolution 2025-R-07-E, authorizing the Safety Service Director to prepare and submit a funding request for the Congressional Community Project Grant Appropriations Program and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Is there a motion for Resolution 2025-R-07-E? Mr. Cox, thank you for the first. Mr. Schmidt, thank you for the second. Any discussion? Seeing none. Roll call, please.
Mr. Tankersley?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Lovett?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mrs. Knight?
Yes.
And Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay. Emergency Resolution 2025-R-07-E has been approved.
Thank you. This time, are there any residents desiring to be heard before council? Your last opportunity. No takers? Okay. Are there matters to be heard before council this evening? Ms. Knight?
I'd just like to make a report for the Senior Citizens Club. We are up to 25 members there, so we've been down as low as 16. So we've a lot of new people that are coming, so I'm excited. I just thought I'd let you guys know.
All right. Any other matters? Seeing none. Do I have a motion for adjournment? Mr. Tankersley, thank you for the first. Mr. Lovett, thank you for the second. All those in favor, yes?
Yes.